Because they're illegal to smoke in their home, they refuse to come out. And then before the pandemic, we were financially comfortable, but right now, everything changed. So we're having financial problems. We couldn't move, but then my landlord and HWA, they were saying that they didn't detect any smoke. So they told us to move out and you know, I sent them all the evidences that, you know, they're smoking and it still smells. But one of the board members from HWA came out to inspect the property multiple times. But she said, she said that she didn't detect any smoke, but it smells so bad. And because two people in their unit, this miracle of smokes, so much smoke is coming in because I asked a repair, home repair expert. He said that because to cut the housing price down, they made the wall hollow with the flimsy materials. So no matter how much we want to ventilate the house by opening the doors or windows, it's gonna still penetrate very easily. And you know, all the structure of the building is made where so that all the vents are connected. So it's coming through the where AC and heaters are coming out. And it's, there was nothing we can do. And my husband is refusing to move because, you know, he wants to take all the financial burden. And then housing, housing market price tripled or doubled. And then like people from LA is moving down here because price, housing prices are lower here. So we don't have much options and we're taking all this financial burden to move and, you know, you know, pay higher housing price because somebody won't, they only get to smoke. And government only allow them their rights, not protect us from, to be smoke free for non smokers. And I did my research and over 60 cities, they already adopted a law to to make the multi-unit housing to be smoke free. But and even I called Riverside County and he said that they already adopted this law. But because Corona City has different jurisdiction, I have to fall. And then, you know, Corona doesn't have it. So my HWA board, everybody is refusing to make a new rule to make the multi-housing complex to be smoke free. So, so I seriously think that City of Corona needs to be like Riverside County to adopt a law to make this multi condo to be smoke free. Because people are, ever since I'm, I lived here for three years and ever since I moved here, people are keep moving out because they are suffering health problems from, you know, smoke drifting into their home. And, you know, they, they're not doing financially well to move to another place. And because this housing is very, you know, good price. So I think it's very unfair. And then even police, they're refusing to come out and help us. And then we want to talk to them because they just said, no matter how it is bothering us or causing health issues, they said that, oh, they have all the rights to smoke. How much, whenever they want, they can smoke 24 hours, they, they, they are refusing to come out.
Okay. Well, well, thank you for, for coming down. It's, it's something we can't discuss right now because it's not formally on the agenda. But thank you for the information, something that I think will. Thank you.
Hey, everyone.
Welcome.
Nice to see your faces again. We're here to follow up with some of our residents from Corona La Linda on our appeal for the ordinance of rent stabilization. We are just, we were wondering and see if, you know, at the end, I'm gonna stay and see if I can talk to any of you in regards to these appeal. You, most of you know how hard we've been fighting for the stability, financial stability for my community. It's a mobile home park, but it's, you know, we are part of Corona. We live here, our taxes stay here, our money stay here when we go out, we go out dinner, whatever. Our childrens go to, go to school here. So we're really looking forward for, you know, be able to have hope on getting the ordinance for rent stabilization. I think the information that I turned in last time has very important information on it. And I really looking forward to hear from you guys, one way or the other. I know that we were here last month and so I was given a little bit of time. You know, since I, last time I spoke with Mayor Westpeak. And you asked us to please allow at least 30 days. So we have big hopes for our community. I know that one of our issues in Corona is homelessness. And we will have elderly homeless people if we don't get that rent stabilization. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I just want to let you know that Councilmember Richens asked to have this put on a future council agenda. So it will come back for us to discuss.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, hello. Well, Marisol Castro from Corona La Linda. We've been here a couple of years back talking about, you know, you were back there when you heard all the situation we were, we were having. Back then, we didn't got nothing, hoping this time we do get something fair for our community, for our park, for 132 or 100 and something families that live on that park. I'm one of them. It's pretty hard to say every story for each one of the families there. Everybody's stories is different. But something that I do know and everybody knows is how everything has been going up like crazy. Gas, food, the rent. And I know there, I know we signed a lease for 5% or a GPI, whatever was greater. I think when we signed that lease, that contract, we never, I think none of the family members ever thought it was gonna go up that much. And it happened. Now we're stuck on this situation. You know, it's pretty hard. A lot of people there are single mothers or have few kids that they're not able to work. So it's hard. So I just ask for you guys to kind of put your shoes on our shoes, your feet on our shoes. And we're people that, you know, work every day. We're trying to get our kids to, you know, progress. We're trying to progress with them as well. So it would be nice if you guys really help us out. And not only Corona La Linda, but all the mobile home parks in Corona. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Council. Michelle Wentworth, Park and Recreation Chairman. I just wanted to take a minute to thank you all for taking the very important step for funding our Park Master Plan and our Trails Master Plan. The Park Commission is kicking it off. 18 months of hard work on both these plans. We will be starting tomorrow at 6 o'clock. So just so you know, the commission is excited, ready to go. And we are looking forward to working with the residents to put together a successful plan. And hopefully all will go well and you guys will see tremendous difference. We're also just really excited. Another thing to let you know is that the, as you know, the staff has hired some, a new person to work in the senior center. And she is phenomenal. Lydia, and I always mess up her last name, Bo- Bo- grand, Bo- grand? Okay, yeah, got it wrong. Anyway, so we got an update at our last meeting and she is phenomenal. She is ready to take this senior center to the next level. And I have to say that probably in the last, at least the six years that I've been on the commission, the services that we provided to our seniors in the community has actually just decreased kind of year over year. And to see that they are ready to take this on exponentially, to go multi-faceted and look at seniors in our community in different categories as active, as frail, as caregivers, all the facets that they need. So the commission was really pleased to hear her, her approach and her plan for the coming year. And we are very supportive of that. So that being said, and now I'll just take off my commissioner hat and put on my citizen's hat because technically when you're talking on the microphone, you have to do that. I just want to take a moment to support the two neighbors that just came up and talked in favor of rent stabilization for Corona La Linda. This was a huge deal years past and they packed this room. We have done so much for our residents that are facing house, home challenges with keeping their homes and, and that are unhoused and currently looking for housing. You guys have made tremendous strides. Normally, mobile home parks are seen as an affordable housing stock in a community and they have quickly become an unaffordable asset in our community. So I would support anything that you could do to help these people to bring their rents down and to see this as part of your strategic plan for fighting homelessness in our community. And I hope you guys have a good rest of your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Have any other? No other cards?
There are no more speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay, great. Then we will go on to public hearings. There are none. Administrative reports, we're going to have a, let's see, a report on the City of Corona Permitting Process Ad-Hoc Committee. Roger Bradley, Assistant City Manager, will present the report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I'm Roger Bradley. I'm the Assistant City Manager. I'll kick off our report this evening. We've been meeting over the past year to discuss improvements that we could do for our permitting process. We've been meeting with the Ad-Hoc Committee, which consisted of Mayor Speak and Vice Mayor Dodario, and working on a plan that was approved at the city council, at the study session last April. Reporting out this evening, we'll talk about the activities that staff has been working on over the past year and talk about our path forward. So our ask for today really is, of course, just to receive the report. As well as, as we go through the, the presentation, we'll talk a little bit about an ordinance that will allow staff to do the ministerial acceptance of public improvements. You see on your council agendas from time to time, various public improvements to release the securities for them or to accept them. We think that lends itself pretty nicely to a ministerial process. And so we'll talk about that and make a recommendation and seek your feedback on that. As well as, we've been working on a platform of initiatives over the last year to improve our permitting process. And the Ad-Hoc Committee has suggested that we finalize our, our committee proceedings and start reporting back to the council on, six months from now, on how we're doing and further after that, if necessary. So with that, I want to talk a little bit about the history, kind of how we got here, what we've been doing over the past year. As, as council may recall, we met about a year ago, a little over a year ago in April, had a study session to discuss the permitting process. There was a request from Mayor Speak and Vice Mayor Dodario to bring forth a report outlining the city's permitting process and to discuss how it works and ways that we can improve it. At the conclusion of that meeting, the city council authorized a ad hoc committee, consisting again of the mayor and the vice mayor, to meet with staff over the next year to work on a set of goals and initiatives to improve that process and to further explore the city's permitting process itself. We basically met on a quarterly basis over the past year. And we recently concluded those proceedings back in March. And here we are to kind of report out today. Just looking at the work plan that was approved by the city council, the study session a year ago. Some of the things that we were asked to work on and discuss with the, the Ad-Hoc Committee was to build a dashboard for the Development Services Division, looking at the customer service metrics and performance metrics so that we can keep track of how things are going in that division and how our process is proceeding and moving forward. There was, as part of that, there would be, you know, standards and benchmarks for the Development Services Group. We were, we were asked to look at ways to come up with roadmaps and checklists for various permit types so that it would be clear for our community how to get through and navigate the permitting process. Looking at launching a virtual inspection program so that you can be at home and have one of our inspectors here on, here at the city hall or other places, offsite from the house, to call in on your, your cell phone and get an inspection. Looking at updating and publishing a dry utility roadmap, streamlining the department sign off for gas meter releases, as well as again, creating ways to make our online electronic plan check procedures a little bit more clear and easy by creating checklists and guidelines for, for the community. And finally, again, the, the ministerial acceptance and release of securities is one of those things that we were supposed to discuss and with the committee and bring back a recommendation to council on. As we met with the, the committee, a few different issues came up and items that we were tasked with looking into. One of them was looking at some of the consultants that we use and seeing whether or not it would make more sense for us to bring those, that workload back in-house rather than using consultants and finding ways to improve quality control of that work. And I came up to look at the entitlement process and seeing whether we should require, as part of the entitlement process, one comprehensive package being submitted for review by staff before we do any kind of improvements or whether we would allow a, a partial approval for, for those items. Conversation came up about our construction and demolition debris recycling ordinance and whether we should make any adjustments to that. And finally, we were asked to, to look at for infill development, for small development projects within the city, if there was a way to streamline that process and shorten the plan check review times. We'll talk about that as we go through the presentation today. So just looking at the, the meetings, we started again at the study session back in April of 2021. The, the staff report from that meeting was attached for, for reference. But just kind of highlighting some of the things that we discussed at that meeting. We looked at the different permit types that we issue here at the city. And there are myriad amount of, myriad types of permits that are actually issued. We reviewed the, the plan check process itself, outlined sort of how it works and operates and looked at various review timelines for plan checks and other things. We, we had some checklists that we had created and began to work on. We discussed, you know, what are some of the common issues that people see and get as they go through the plan check process? We had a customer service survey that was put together. We are, of course, always committed to finding ways to improve ourselves and we really want to get feedback from those that are going through the process so that we can figure out not only what we're doing well, but the areas that we need to improve on and focus in on and make improvements for, for those that are going through the process. Right before that meeting at the study session, we did hold a workshop with the development community to really seek their feedback and have a conversation with them on, on some of the issues that they were experiencing. And a lot of the, the work plan that was created at the study session was a result of that conversation with the development community. We discussed future process improvements. And then at the end, conclusion of that meeting, council did give staff direction to work with the Ad-Hoc Committee to make those improvements and see what we could do over the next year to make that process more customer service friendly for, for our community. So looking at the first meeting, we again discussed, this was a little after July. We had made some organizational adjustments and changes. Previous to July, we actually had the land development group in our Public Works Department functioning in our Public Works Department. And we actually made some adjustments to bring them down to join the community development department and re-titled that department, the Planning and Development Department. So they became the Development Services Division of that group. We really had the idea that we brought those elements together in one department that we would be much more customer service friendly. You have a one-stop shop for folks to come in. You don't have to go searching for two different departments for issues that you might be experiencing as you go through the development process. And really you have one leadership philosophy. So you have one department head managing that function. You don't have different SOPs. Everybody's working together collaboratively under one group. And, and that over the past year has really been a, a big change and something that I've seen as we've gone through this process, make an improvement and difference in, in our review process. We, we went through and showed our billing division dashboard, which again has surveys from those that have gone through the plan check process and outlines how satisfied they are with the services that they received. We created some videos, some videos that we posted online that showed folks how to use our online software to go through the plan check process, how to make it easier, cut it into little snippets so that you can easily go on and identify how to use certain aspects of our software to make it a little bit easier for you and begin looking at and creating our plan check guidelines for the electronic submittal of, of plans and other things for that group, for the permit process. Looking at meeting number two, we had a very in-depth conversation about contract staff, trying to figure out whether, you know, say it again, sir?
I said, that's a nice way to say it.
Yeah, we talked about whether it makes sense for us to bring some contract staff in-house. We talked about quality control. And really, I think the conversation was focusing, focused around, you know, if we use in-house staff to go through our plan check process, there's a little bit more discretion and there's a little more comfortableness working with our SOPs. And so that they have the ability to make decisions and hopefully get to yes a little bit more easier. We did actually bring that recommendation back from the Ad-Hoc Committee to contract in several of our positions that are done through contract services. And in January of this year, council approved five additional staff for the Development Services Division, which we are currently recruiting and trying to bring people on board. We went over the Development Services Dashboard, similar to what is in the billing division, to show again, you know, what's our performance metrics, how we're doing, and looking at customer service metrics so that we know, you know, are people satisfied with our services? And constantly looking at ways that we can approve through that media, that medium. We reviewed some flow, flow charts. And there was a request at that meeting as well to look at, again, infill projects. So we have a number of small projects that come through the, the permitting process that really get treated and bundled in with very large projects. And so the question came up from the Ad-Hoc Committee, well, can we separate that a little bit and not treat them necessarily like a big, a big project and give them a little bit of a streamlined process and a shortened review timeframe? And so we looked, we looked at that and we have a recommendation we'll be making on that as well today. We think that we can actually accommodate that once we get to full staffing in the Development Services Division. So we should be able to give a little bit better customer service and a little bit better and a faster timeframe. Meeting three, we did a number of software demonstrations. So we had, which were actually live with as of last month. So you at home, you can get a virtual inspection. So you can open up your, your smartphone and you can talk to an inspector, you can get your project approved. And that's actually live and active right now. That's a new improvement that we've brought through. We do have an agreement with a company called Camino, which is going to be putting online a, basically a walk you through of how to get permits so that you can actually figure out, you know, if I have an improvement I'm making or if I'm building a home, you can go into the software and it'll find and delineate for you exactly how you're gonna get through the permitting process. So if you're a homeowner and you're trying, or you're a developer or you're trying to do some improvements, you can go through there and do some good research and figure out how to navigate that process much more easily. We reviewed the Development Services Dashboard and I'll give you an example of the dashboard as we get to the end of this presentation. And as of yesterday, we have a soft launch of our queuing system. So if you go into the Planning and Development Department to get services at the counters, there is now a, a check-in with a iPad. You can go in and check in and you'll show up on a screen and show yourself where you're at on the queue. As, as opposed to this presentation, that check-in process, we actually had sort of an archaic, you know, sign in with a pencil. And I think we had some conversation at this meeting or a prior meeting with some concerns about how the queuing system works. So we do have an improvement here that we're proud to, to bring forward. We will actually in the next month or two have, have it so that you can be at home and get in line. So you can check in and know where you're at in line and come on down to city hall when you're ready to, to be served. We had some discussions and I'll talk about them with, here with the council as well, about infill standards as well as the ministerial acceptance of securities and finding ways to approve our customer services through those processes. And I'll turn to those actually right now. Looking at infill standards, as I discussed a little bit earlier, we have, you know, often smaller projects that come through. If you're looking to do, you know, a single-family grading plan, dry utilities, these things can go through the same process review as you would for a large project. So it takes 20 days on the first review to get through the process, the second review 15, and then the third and subsequent reviews to that takes 10 days. And we've been pretty light in the Development Services Group, we've, on staffing. Let's send councils approve additional staff there. We definitely think that we can significantly improve the review timeframe and actually reduce it by half. So we're proposing after we get to full staffing through our recruitments, which probably we anticipate happening in the fall, of reducing our first review down to 10 working days, so cutting it in half. And then second, second or subsequent reviews will be seven days after that. So we think we can actually do this pretty quickly. But again, we need some additional staffing to accomplish that. And one of the items that we're again seeking some direction for council on today is the grading of public improvements. We do have in our code right now, for small projects, like a custom home on an existing lot, that staff has the ministerial ability to go through and accept improvements. So if you're building a home and you'd have, you know, put in a curb and gutter or something like that, you have to put up a bond or some other cash equivalent to make sure that's done properly. And staff can accept that and enter an agreement for a small project. And then when it's done, we'll return the funds if it's done properly. But when you get to a, a small, you know, like a, a big project, like a subdivision or other things, that comes to council. And you see those regularly on your agenda where we're accepting securities or having to release them when the, the project is complete. It does take a little bit of time for staff to put all that together. But more importantly, it takes time for the, the person that's doing the work. So they have to wait for staff to prepare a report, to get it on the council agenda or, and get before the council. And there really isn't a lot of discretion necessarily for the box for council to, to have on this item. The boxes are all checked, so it's either release or accept and you, and you move on. So at this point, we believe that that really lends itself more appropriately to maybe a ministerial process. And that way it prevents the person who may have financing or the things that they're paying for while they're waiting for the item to get on to the, the council agenda. It allows them to save some money. So we're recommending, and so is the Ad-Hoc Committee, that we come back with an ordinance for your consideration in the future that will allow the staff to just manage that process ministerially and, and everybody will have a little bit better customer service and it will, will save us a little staff time as well. I wanted to go through real quickly, we do have the, the work plan that was approved by the, the city council. But I wanted to highlight that we've been doing quite a bit of stuff over the past year or two, just to improve our process. And I wanted to kind of go over that. It's not just what was in the, the work plan. As you see up in the top corner, I talked about in the beginning, we have a realignment of our organizational structure. So we really created by moving the Public Works Land Development Group down to Planning and Development as a Development Services Division, a one-stop shop for folks to come in and get all of their development needs met. You again have one group you're looking for, one leadership structure. So we have again, Ms. Coletta that's been leading that group over the past year. And we've really seen some significant improvements as she's taken in the helm of, of the Development Services Group. The pandemic, of course, was an issue for everybody during that timeframe. We created a process where you could submit electronic plans, plans electronically. So you could be home, upload your, your plans and have it reviewed by staff, not necessarily having to come down at all to deal with anybody here and have it all handled for you remotely, as well as getting your comments and, and changes all completed through that process. We've created some guidelines to help folks get through that. And again, I mentioned, you know, we've created some customer service surveys. One of the things that we really want to make sure that we're getting is feedback from those that are going through our permitting process. So we, we again want to know what we're doing well so we can capitalize on our strengths. But more importantly, we want to see what kind of problems they're having so that we can make changes and adjust and make sure that we're meeting the folks' needs that are coming through the, the permitting process. We have a, a nice dashboard that's been created for the, the building, the inspections division on our, our building process. So it shows us again how, how people are satisfied with our, our customer service, whether our review times are, are appropriate. And then we can make adjustments and we have at our fingertips all that data for ourselves. We have the e-track it module that's on our, our website. You can go in there and find out where you are in your, your review process. And we have those special videos that have been uploaded to help people get through that process and let them to know how to use the e-track it software appropriately. Staff has been putting together man-made flow charts so that you can look through and see how to get through the plan check process and have an understanding of what we are going to ask of you as you go through the permitting process. As I mentioned earlier, we had a developer workshop. We plan to continue to work with our development community to get their feedback and have those workshops with, with the development community to make sure we understand what's going on and what we can do better. You know, our study session occurred last year. We did create a, a early utility release handout for folks that would, as, at the request of the development community so that they can understand how that process goes and more easily navigate it. We are working with our consultants, those that we have, and making sure that we are monitoring their performance. So we have a review tool. We have quality control in place for those that are under our, our consultant control. We put together our, for our plan check electronic submittals, how-to videos to upload and have your plans reviewed. We are appreciative of council for continuing to add some additional staff support to our development functions and that's making a lot of difference. As I mentioned yesterday, we had a soft launch of our lobby customer queuing system. The communal permitting guide is something that folks can take advantage of on our website to figure it out. to figure out in, how to navigate our permitting process. And again, it's a check, check the box and drive, you write to the kind of permit you're working on so that you can actually see what you're going to need to do to go through the permitting process. We're actually in the process of launching this software in June. And we expect, as we have a lot of permits, it's going to take a little bit of time, probably a year and a half to two years to get through every permit type. But at, after the end of that process, you'll be able to go onto our website, look up the type of permit you're getting and get the information that you need about how to get through and navigate that process. Our virtual inspection software is now in place. So you can use your smartphone to get an inspection on your home. We hold pre-construction conferences with developers or other individuals that are going through the process to help them understand what they, they need to accomplish as they go through the process. And, you know, back in January, we were, had the approval of five additional staff in our Development Services Division. So that's making a big difference on, on the staff ability to accomplish workload. One of the things that happens sometimes we've noticed is we have a lot of communication as staff with the, the design group as you go through the development process. But we don't always have a lot of communication with the, the owner. So we are having an automated process that we put in place where as your plans are getting reviewed and you're going through different steps of the process, that you get an automated email to let you know where you are and what's going on so that all people involved are, are aware of each step in the process and whether it's in the city's court or whether it's in the, the applicant's court to, to make, to take action. We have our FAQ sheets that we've been putting together, trying to figure out exactly what common issues and concerns are coming up and putting that together and publishing it on the website so that folks can see what common issues are coming up. We have a, again, a dashboard for the Development Services Division to track customer service metrics as well as review timeframes. We have surveys that are going out for, for both development and the building side of the house to make sure that we are getting feedback. Again, we're seeking feedback from the council tonight to look at our public improvement ordinance and we'd love to get direction on whether you'd like to proceed with that. And finally, we are looking at streamlining our infill timeframe, infill project review timeframes to make it a little bit more customer service friendly and a shorter review time. I'll go through quickly the work list items that were approved by council and those that were added by the, the committee itself. Our dashboards have been developed. We are gathering data and integrating that into the new dashboards on a regular basis. And that's happening continuously so that each day we can look at it and see exactly how we're doing and get feedback from those that are going through the process. We have created checklists where, for homeowners and builders and they have access to, to that online. Our virtual inspection software, as I mentioned, is now, is launched, launched as of April. We do have the guidelines provided, the information to applicants on how to use the city's online plan check software that have been published. We are looking for feedback this evening to delegate to the city manager who has designated authority to enter into grading and public improvement security agreements. We've had additional staff added to the Development Services Group and we have others that are proposed in the upcoming budget to bolster the customer service and time and workload ability of our planning and development department. One of the things that we talked about and council may be aware of, we've had some issues. Not a whole lot of them, but they have come up from time to time with the entitlement process where a developer may not have been aware of the, how the review was going and, and the concern might be, well, should we go through, make, require that the submittal be complete before we would review it as a city staff? We talked about this issue with the ad hoc committee and the feeling was that the vast majority of folks that are going through the entitlement process do enjoy submitting things as a partial submittal. As items are done and they can be reviewed and completed and it makes it a little bit more smooth process for, for developers. If you require everybody to have a full, a full application before they submit, it really slows down the process and lengthens it for the development community, makes it more difficult. And so not to punish the whole, the whole group, we wanted to make sure that the ad hoc committee recommended that we just add an acknowledgement to all the applications. That simply says that I'm submitting and I acknowledge that this is a partial submittal so that if there are any issues down the road, that we can call back, call their attention to the fact that yes, they understand that it was a partial submittal in the first place. So not recommending making any kind of changes to our current process, but just adding an acknowledgement to our applications that yes, they understand it's a partial submittal. We actually already have and found that in our construction demolition debris ordinances that we are already doing adequate recycling. So we had a, a short conversation about that. And again, we are recommending cutting our infill and smaller plan review times in half to 10 working days. And again, that's, we have a little caveat there that once we get all our staffing on, on board, which again, we expect to happen in the fall. Just quickly, want to look at again, one of our dashboards here and give you a quick review of the year 2021 and how we were doing performance-wise and through our customer service surveys. So for 2021, we received 164 surveys. We had about 85% overall positive rating from all the, for those, all that responded. We'll call your attention, I think, to the overall experience category where you see there's about 88% have had a positive experience. So about nine out of 10 folks are having a positive experience as they go through the development process. Yes, that does mean we have room for improvement. The, the one area that you can see that we, we had a little bit of a less, little, little, little bit more negative feedback was the project docs, ease of use, and that's the online submittal of plans. Kind of investigated that a little bit and what we're finding at this point is that folks are having some concerns that you have to upload individually all the plan check sheets, plan sheets as you go through the initial upload process. And the reason why we do that is so that when you get through the initial upload, when you have comments that are returned to you, we can just flip out single pages rather than have you re-upload the whole, the whole plan check, the whole plans, set of plans. So initially it is a little more workload and I think that's been a little bit of, a, a point of concern for some folks. But in the, as you go through the process, it does make it easier. And we have been putting together guidelines and tips for folks to make, help them get through that process a little bit easier. As you can see in the bottom right corner, it's about 50/50 of those that are using the, the online process to upload plans or, and those that are just coming in to the traditional way and talking to our staff at the, the public service counter. Looking at the inspection division, the building side of the house, we do have a goal to go through the first plan, plan check review in about 10 business days and the second one and subsequent to that at five business days. We do have a goal to get through the whole plan check process by the third plan check. And you see the bottom there, we do that about 91% of the time. So still room for improvement, but about nine times out of 10, we're able to get that done by the third plan check. As far as turnaround times, we, we're about 11 days on our first review, 11.3 days. So need to improve a little bit, but not too far from our goal. And then again, for the second review, 5.1 days. And we're meeting our review times about 86% of the time. So next steps at this point, just want to kind of highlight some of the things that we are working on. We are proposing to continue to work on the, the action items that were listed in our work plan. We wanted to kind of give expectations, some of the timeframes. The virtual inspections are actually live now, so that's actually rolling and staff is working with folks to allow them to have virtual inspections. The queuing system, again, soft launched yesterday. We do expect to be able to check in offline within the next month or two. We're working through that system and getting it implemented. But you can as, as now go into the building, the Planning and Development Department and sign in online and see yourself in the queue. We are continuing to make permit roadmaps, basically having flow charts of how to get through the process and staff is working on uploading those as we, as we get them done. We do expect to get through that process through, through the winter. That'll help us as we feed into our Camino software development. And again, that's the online software that walks you through specifically what type of permit you want. So it'll take those flow charts and make them a much more easier to use through a long, online software platform that will guide you to the type of permit that you need to rather than trying to find a specific flow chart. We are in the process of hiring new staff and we expect to have them on board and that will drive our implementation of infill standards, reducing them and as discussed earlier. And that really gets me to the end of the report. Again, wanted to have, recommend to the council, of course, receive the report, which we've just done. Looking for some feedback and approval to continue to work on an ordinance that would allow for the ministerial acceptance and release of public improvement securities. And then just looking for some direction to continue to report out and come back in six months from now and give you an update on how we are doing with our project goals and objectives. And that concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Ms. Edwards, do we have any speaker cards?
Mayor, no, we do not.
Great. Councilmember Casillas.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley for the report. I really appreciate it. And I appreciate the work. This was one of the, just like that, the, the purchasing process, deep dive, this was one of those areas that we really wanted to take a closer look at how it is that, you know, the work is being done at City Hall. And I'm glad that the ad hoc committees, along with you and staff, have really parsed through the process and come up with, you know, real tangible ways to make it better. I am surprised however, by item 11, the recommendation from the ad hoc and from staff to only have an acknowledgement for folks who are, the, the, the conversation about whether or not we should accept complete permits, packages or partial packages because we have had several instances where we have developers who just don't recognize that in the process of trying to, you know, make things easier, we're accepting partial applications and then we end up with some sort of miscommunication. So I am surprised that we decided not to require full and completed, you know, packages. But I, I would, I would say if I can tweak it at all, I, I don't know what this acknowledgement looks like, but I'm hoping it's not just like a size eight font on the bottom of a piece of paper. I'm hoping it's like a real, you know, full page, you know, before you turn in that you acknowledge that this is an incomplete package and that we're doing this and, you know, to help you keep moving forward. And if there's anything that comes up in the, you know, revisions that, that, you know, you're taking on that risk. So can you speak a little bit more about what that's actually going to look like for the developer?
I think we're still looking for, well, we definitely could find something.
I was going to say, I think. And the reason why we went that way is because we talked to both staff and, and to developers as well, that getting those pieces in slowly allows staff to kind of eat the elephant one, one bite at a time versus having to, you know, trying to eat the whole thing at one time. And, and yes, but definitely getting a, a very distinct and very solid acknowledgement that there are still these things outstanding and acknowledgement that you're not complete.
Yeah, I think that, that, that detail is going to be important. So whatever that turns into, I just say, you know, be mindful not to make it something that can be just easily signed and looked over. Because I would imagine that if it is that, that we will continue to have the issues that we have had in the past where a developer may say like, why didn't you bring this up? Plan check number one, right?
We could definitely look to make sure we get something that's very conspicuous and understood, so.
Wonderful. Thank you. Well, with that, I'm in full agreement of the three recommendations. Thank you.
Councilmember Richens.
Thank you, Roger. Did, we mentioned the ad hoc committee was Wes and Tony, right? And I've been watching this for the last year and I've been poking at them a little bit, but I'm thankful that they both took the time out to go through this process with Roger and team. The, I'd also like to make another comment. I, I pull permits and I work with permits throughout Southern California. And I, I actually don't think Corona is, is as bad as many, many other cities. It's there are, if, try building anything in Long Beach, good luck. But I do think, just from my experience watching from the back row and my experience from watching from this row, that many of our successes are because of the hard work of Joanne Coletta. And I, I hope she doesn't retire. I think she's got a good 10, 15 years in her. So.
You just jinxed it, Tom. Knock on wood, nothing.
Maybe 20. So I, I think we should celebrate the successes also where we have the successes. The, the only thing that drives me absolutely bonkers is obnoxious plan check comments. And I see him quite a bit. And, and the way it works is a homeowner will get an obnoxious, obnoxious plan check comment. And I think my favorite to this day is still Wyden Kendall Street. So then I gotta go to Roger's office and fight with Roger. And then Roger goes down to the building department and then they're out to set him straight so he can come back and set me straight. And then now I gotta fight with Roger some more. And we literally spent an hour on plumbing code in his office one day and looking for the exceptions. And we found him. But the problem was this attitude of, I don't know where in Fantasyland these plan checkers are living, but some of these dudes gotta go. Like we, or we need to have one plan checker that has some common sense to him or one in-house guy that can say, yeah, this plan check comment sucks. Because there are so many of them. And, and I look at him and I've spent my career in building and I'm just thinking, these plan check guys have never spent a day on a job site. And I'll give you an example, not in our city, but in Irvine, we literally submitted blueprints last October to change out switchgear like for like. So we're taking out the switchgear and replacing it with the exact same switchgear. Nothing changes. And Irvine put me through four rounds of plan check comments. And they wanted calculations and studies and reports and, and it wasn't. Till we finally got this plan checker on the phone and you knew she'd never set foot on a job site. She didn't understand construction. And the city of Irvine has hired her to do their plan check comments. And you're just like, dude, you gotta go. And don't you dare think of applying, you know what, stay right there, don't apply a Corona. But I see so many obnoxious plan check comments and I see defensiveness by people, someone on this floor defending them to Roger when I have to go fight with them. Someone's got to cut these things out. And, and it's not fear, and, and by the way, fear of the state reprisal because of a plan check comment, that's got to go too. Because we're the city and we're going to build right in our city and that's common sense construction, not obnoxiousness, plan check comments. So I, I'm willing to sit with anybody and go over them. But to me, that's my biggest fight is obnoxious plan check comments. And I'm hoping in the next round or somewhere in this presentation, they can be specifically addressed. And with that, not much of questions or comments. I support all three recommendations.
Great. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Steiner.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Roger, good job. It was, it was a good presentation. And Mayor and Vice Mayor, thank you for your extra efforts working on the ad hoc. I've been on a couple of those ad hocs and it does take a lot of extra time out of your day, so thank you both. I agree very much with Councilmember Casillas' comments about making sure these developers know exactly that this isn't done yet, dude. So don't be crying at the end because we didn't do something for you when we told you it's not done yet. So we definitely got to make sure that has teeth. And with that, I support the three recommendations as well.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Bradley, for the presentation. You know, this was a, a fun first ad hoc for me. This is something that was pretty passionate for me.
13 months.
Yep. You know, I'm also in the building industry and so for me, it speaks and it resonates. And Mayor Speak and I had some meetings with some developers and some engineers that were, you guys sit down and we're going to yell at you for a while and it was not fun. And my overarching theme for this ad hoc that I was really trying to get to was how do we get to yes, right? How do we, how do we make the process workable? How do we make it user-friendly? And, and, you know, I, I have to tip my hat to Ms. Coletta and her team and, and Assistant City Manager Bradley because they were very frank conversations. They were not fun conversations. They were frank conversations about some of the challenges and the issues that we see. And to their credit, they took the feedback and they worked on some plans that are really going to make some improvements. We've all seen the comments that in, you know, in plan check that aren't fun. And, and when you get into this, you realize that, you know, with a consultant, you have someone that is erring on the side of caution. And sometimes they're going, like the kids say, they're a little extra. And so, but we recognize that and we're able to kind of work through some of those issues. And, you know, part of the, part of what came up through this ad hoc is recognizing that if we have in-house people. is recognizing that if we have in-house people, they understand a little bit more, and they're a little bit more lenient, and they understand what they can and can't get, they can and can't do. And so that's why it was important to us to kind of bring that in-house and really own that process. I myself had to go on a day downstairs and sign in and go through the whole process because I needed some help from the, from the folks down there. And it was an interesting and eye-opening experience. And so I think that, you know, the mayor and I spoke from a lot of, actually, I think we did a really good job of speaking in specifics rather than, you know, not speaking in specifics. And so I'm really proud of the work that was done here. I'm really proud of the team for coming up and coming up with some great solutions and being open to critical feedback and, and really working through this process. I have a whole new respect for all of these, all of these folks that, and what they have to deal with. And it's not an easy job. And for me, it started with developers outside of our city telling me that if they do work in Corona, they add a premium because of some of the challenges that they've had. And so that's not something that, as an elected official, that you really want to hear about your own community. You want to hear that, "Hey, I love doing business in Corona because, or I love doing work in Corona because they make the process easy." I don't think that we're 100% there yet, but I think that we're on the road for that. So I really appreciate all the hard work that went into this. And I'm also in support of all the suggestions.
Thank you, sir. Again, I echo the rest of the council here. Thank you, Mr. Bradley, for a good presentation, kind of really summed up the work that we've done. And again, I want to echo to Ms. Coletta and her team. We challenged everyone. Like the Vice Mayor said, they weren't fun conversations. But we really hammered home that point of getting to yes and understanding how people get to yes. And there is a confusion for most folks that we see that the city is basically built out. I know when people hate to hear that, but we have a lot of infill projects that, and there's a reason. There either infill projects or there are projects that, that were difficult or are gonna be difficult. So we, acknowledging that and knowing that we're gonna need some leeway is great. The video inspection is really cool, those of you that haven't tried it. If you have a simple water heater change, you can literally click a button and have somebody look at your, your water heater and make sure it's right and be done. Don't have to wait for someone to come down. It's, it's great. And they're gonna be expanding that more and more. The Camino software is, I think frankly, Mr. Roger, you, you undersold it. It's really a game changer. You just say what you want to do, and it gives you every single thing that you need. And I know that it was gonna take some, some time for us to work through that. We kind of saw another city's version of it. It was really cool to be able to walk through and see the videos that were done, the additional FAQs to be able to hand people, because it is confusing to have them walk through. And I'm really happy to acknowledge and having some of those frank discussions with some of our, you know, developers in towns and builders and engineers to really tell them and ask the question, "What does delay, how does delay help the city?" And the answer is, "It doesn't. It doesn't help the city. It makes more work for us. It makes more work for, for the developer. It makes more work for the engineer." So, you know, finding those little pieces that we can insert in and make things a little bit better. You know, having people in-house that understand the Corona way. And that doesn't mean a shortcut. That doesn't mean doing something that's against the law or not safe. It just means that we're finding ways to get to yes. And is, I know that we have some, some, the only thing I think standing in the way of that is hiring people. And I know that we've had those, a few of those positions that we went out for two or three times. And I know that Mr. Ellis says he's, he's very vested. And we talk about it all the time to ensure that we can get that person or people in, in our system to make this process work better, faster, and more streamlined, especially when we, you know, whenever the next cycle is gonna be, because we're gonna see more infill projects. So with that, I like the three as well. Let's see. Ms. Edwards, do we have any speaker cards for this item?
Mayor, no, we do not.
Okay, great. All right. Just wanna check one more time, because we talked for a long time. So with that, I'd like to make the motion for this item.
Any motion?
We do, because there's three recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay.
And for the voice vote, Councilmember Casillas.
Aye.
Councilmember Richens.
Aye.
Councilmember Steiner.
Aye.
Vice Mayor DeDario.
Aye.
Mayor Speak.
Aye.
The item passes five to zero.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to legislative matters. This is the ordinance and policy approving the continued use and purchase of military equipment by the police department. Does any council member want a report on this item? Okay. Councilmember Casillas. Lieutenant Chad Fountain will present a report.
Yeah, before I kick it over to Lieutenant Fountain, I just want to thank Mayor and Council for being here tonight and listening to our presentation as we're seeking your support and approval of a new ordinance and policy for the police department, which outlines the use of certain military equipment. And I put that in air quotes because that is a term that's defined by the legislator, the legislation, by the state of California legislation in Assembly Bill 481. And with that, I will kick it over to Lieutenant Chad Fountain. He oversees our special enforcement bureau, our special response team, which involve many of the members who manage and use the involved equipment. So with that, Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me tonight. Promised not to keep you too long. My bedtime reminder just went off, so.
Mine too.
So, yeah, we're here to talk about AB 481 military equipment and get some approval. So our ask tonight is that council will adopt our ordinance to approve the acquisition and deployment of current and future specialized police equipment. And then, secondly, to approve the current use policies, which establish ongoing standards for safe de-escalation techniques, police equipment use, and the application consistent with AB 481. So a little historical context. The Federal Surplus Acquisition Act of 1944 authorized the DOD to transfer surplus government equipment to local, federal, and state law enforcement agencies subject to specific conditions at no cost to the acquiring agency. And that language comes straight from the Assembly Bill 41. We do participate currently in Military 1033 surplus program. The only equipment we currently have from that program is 20 rifles that are stored in our armory that we use for training purposes at the range or sometimes during active shooter training. So a little background on Assembly Bill 41. It was signed into law by Governor Newsom back on September 30th of '21, and it became effective January 1st of this year. It redefines certain specialized law enforcement equipment. Like the chief mentioned, that they consider military equipment. And it requires oversight by local elected officials, which would be you, for the, for any purchases that we wish to do and use of the equipment that's been deemed in military equipment in the legislation. The law requires us to create a use policy, which we have already done, and that you all adopt the, the policy at council after a public hearing's been held, which we are currently doing. So this is just a brief snapshot of the front of our CP, our policy, which you can see is completed, Policy Number 709. And then on the left is the equipment that was taken straight from the Assembly Bill, some of the stuff that they consider military equipment. I can't see that far, so just a few. It's like armored cars, drones, UAS, automatic weapons, and a few other items in there. And it's all the pricing and purchase costs and all that stuff in some of the staff report that we provided.
If I could jump in right here. Some of the equipment that, it's important to understand, they deem military equipment, but it's in fact police-acquired equipment from private vendors that are specific towards, you know, protecting the sanctity of life. You know, less lethal equipment, less lethal projectiles, gas, that really prevents the escalation of forts and helps us in these situations. So it's important to differentiate that.
So as the chief mentioned, the purpose of some of the equipment, number one is preservation of human life. That's what we use a lot of this equipment for. Search and rescue operations, evacuating victims, high-risk apprehensions. And as the chief just mentioned, less lethal use of force options. And specialized equipment that we use as force multiplier and helps reduce manpower, like searching with drones, searching with robots, things that we can clear houses and do things at a faster pace that keeps everybody safe. Impact of mutual aid, so a lot of this equipment has been in use for a long time by law enforcement agencies. And we rely on mutual aid with our neighboring agencies, such as up there is Riverside PD, the Sheriff's Department, Highway Patrol. They come into our city and do operations as well. So tonight, through approval of the ordinance and the policy, you're also extending approval to them to come into the city and use their equipment as well. And then, City Council responsibilities. Conduct a public hearing, find that the military or specialized police equipment is necessary because there's no reasonable alternative to achieve officer and civilian safety. The use policies that we have, Policy 709, will safeguard the public's welfare, safety, civil rights, and civil liberties. And if we purchase, determine that the equipment is reasonably cost-effective compared to any alternatives that can achieve the same objective and keep us and the community safe. Lastly, determine if the existing policy complies with the use policy. And if not, remedy non-conforming issues and ensure future compliance. And we don't have any of those issues that we are known to us at this moment. So after the public hearing, we're asking that you formally adopt an ordinance for the current deployment and future acquisition of any specialized law enforcement or military equipment. Direct that we send a copy of the use policies to the governor's office, that we compose an annual report to be published on our website, that will include any new equipment, approved equipment, any complaints concerning any equipment that was, that is on the list, and inventory and a summary of the use throughout the year. And lastly, to direct that the, I think I already mentioned, the information is published on our police website. And just summarize the ask. Adopt the ordinance to approve the acquisition and deployment of current and future specialized police equipment and approve current use policies, which establish ongoing standards for safe de-escalation techniques and police, police equipment use and application that's current with the Assembly Bill 481. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you, Lieutenant Fountain. Let's see. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, I do not have any speaker cards.
Great. Have questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Casillas?
Thank you. Thanks, Lieutenant Fountain. Thank you for the presentation. So just so that I'm understanding this correctly, essentially, PD has always been able to purchase the equipment that PD has needed. But the state has now changed the definition and has said, "Now that you're doing this routine thing, you have to let people know the things that you're purchasing now."
Basically, yeah. A lot of this equipment we've already had for years. Our Bearcat, our rifles, our drones, all the stuff we've had and in use. And all this stuff has already been approved, you know, through major purchases through the council already. So, yeah, this is just a formal.
Just flagging it again. And so.
Major change to, Ms. Casillas is that. Whereas before, we would only seek council approval for major purchases, as Lieutenant Fountain said. But now we, for every replenishment of item used that are listed in this long, lengthy list, we will need to come before council for ordinary replenishments of equipment utilized during training or during field use.
And what you find is that this equipment, while maybe can, you know, to the layperson raise eyebrows, you're need, you absolutely need it to do your job. Like, the bad guys have things that are worse than this stuff. And so you need it in order to stay safe.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. If we don't have this stuff, we basically don't have a special response team, a SWAT team. Like, all this equipment is essential in high-risk situations. And without it, you know, we wouldn't be able to safely do our job.
Yeah. And could you share, maybe anecdotally, just an opportunity where this equipment has either, you know, come in handy in a tough situation or has helped our officers stay safe, maybe in the recent, in our recent history?
Yeah, I mean, almost a few times a week, we're using our drones to go out ahead of us to make sure, you know, maybe dangerous areas are cleared. You know, we can use them to fly into houses if we need to. They have the bigger ones, the smaller ones, zoom cameras.
So our armored rescue vehicle, which is, you know, Lieutenant Fountain's been referring to as a Bearcat, which is a, you know, brand. But it's an armored rescue vehicle, and that's really its purpose. It's not a military-grade vehicle. It's, looks to be that, but it's not. And most municipalities now utilize these pieces of armor to safely rescue homeowners. We had an incident just last year where the Riverside Sheriff's Department in Haruba Valley had a situation where they were being fired upon by a domestic violence situation. And we were able to deploy our Bearcat, our armored rescue vehicle, quickly because it's accessible to all of our officers, who are trained to drive and utilize it, to Haruba Valley. And we were able to rescue those officers and family members from the nearby homes. So it's vital equipment to preserve sanctity, sanctity of life. Without this, then there's more drastic measures that, you know, could happen to anybody, to all of us, really.
Thank you for that. And just to be clear, so from now on, then, any purchase comes before the council, or is it like a once-a-year thing?
Any purchase of anything that's on that list, we have to come before you.
And there was one thing on that list that I was curious about. There was a launch explosive projectiles. What is that?
Yeah, so that is what they consider. So the launch is the platform for like CS gas, let's say. So a lot of this, this law, this Assembly Bill was created through, due to the, you know, events of 2020, 2021, where a lot of demonstrations were going on. And the goal is that there has to be authority and approval before use of projectiles. So in this list defines what that is. It is, you know, could be less lethal projectiles. We call them 40 millimeter. Many of you have seen them. They're basically rubber, large projectiles that are less lethal in nature to basically distract somebody, wake them up, get them to comply with orders. And, and/or any other projectile is gonna be launched out of a 40 millimeter, which is typically our gas elements, smoke, or the 40 millimeters.
Oh, got it. See, I thought, I read explosive projectiles, and I think, like, boom and fire. You know what I mean?
Right.
I don't think rubber pellets, so.
Yes.
Okay, well, thanks for clearing that up. I really do appreciate the presentation and for you clearing this up and, and for us making note that this is really a routine thing. And it's just now becoming another layer of bureaucracy and having to identify it, so.
I think one last thing, if I may, that's important, is all this equipment that we use, everybody's trained on it before they can use it. It's not like we just hand somebody a piece of equipment and go, go have fun. Everybody go through extensive training, especially our special response team. You know, they're trained twice a month, using all this equipment throughout the year to make sure we're proficient on it, so.
Yeah, that's really important. Thanks for adding that. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Richens?
I love the Bearcat. And I, I think like three-fourths of Corona's kids have played on it by now, right? So my only question is, is, and it's just in general to police equipment, is I know the detectives have to drive undercover police cars. But the regular black and whites, do all of them have light bars on top, or are there some without?
We have a couple of traffic cars that are due to cycle out that have lights in the front windshield. But moving forward, all of our traffic cars are moving to the light bar on top.
Okay, so no more undercover sniper cop cars?
No guarantee, sir. No guarantee. We evaluate that as the need persists. We do believe that the light bar on top of our police units provide additional awareness for safety for our officers. But there's always new equipment that comes. But there's always new equipment that comes that can provide that same from inside the vehicle as well.
Can we, can we get a guarantee to put the light bars on top? Because it's deceptive, and citizens don't need to be deceived by the, by the police department. So it's, it's great when the light bar's on top. And you have imposters out there, too, right? That are pulling people over. And you, you want to get away from that imposter movement as much as possible.
Yeah, I cannot guarantee that because there is equipment that is essential for our police work. And sometimes that entails having more covert-type equipment. And that's to preserve the safety of citizens out there. And sometimes you might see, like, you see California Highway Patrol out there with all-white cars. And that's because you get locked in to seeing lights on top of cars.
Well, I'd like to talk to those guys, too. To be honest with you, I think they need to get rid of those all-white cars because they've taken the lettering off the back, and they've taken the light bar off the top of it. And apparently, each sector has one white highway patrol police car.
Councilmember Richards, I think the idea is, is that people should obey the law, the traffic laws, regardless of who's around.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great idea. But the idea is to have your police presence, not have your police snipers. So I'm gonna, if, I can't control the highway patrol, but I can make a point here.
The vehicle code does define the legal parameters for what police vehicles have to be equipped with. And that does include markings, lights. So there is a vehicle code standard, which we comply with.
Can we enhance the vehicle standard? That we can make it better?
Mr. Ellis, you don't chime in?
Yeah, I think that's probably a different conversation. I don't think we want to make commitments right now how we're going to change our police cars. But your points are well-taken, and we can probably talk further about that if we need to. But over the dais tonight is probably not the time to do that.
Then when do we do it?
Well, we can have a future conversation if we want to talk about how we want to change our police cars. But really, this is just about a military-approved list for 481. It's not really about changing our fleet.
Okay. Then let's have the future conversation.
Okay. Councilmember Steiner?
Yeah, guys, I'm sorry that the state keeps making you jump through all these hoops, but just keep doing your best. We got your back.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, the only thing that I wanted to add is, it was very poignant to me that, and you didn't, you didn't mention it enough, Lieutenant Fountain, is that while this equipment is also for the safety and citizens, of the citizens of Corona, it's also for officer safety. I mean, any type of equipment that ensures that an officer gets home to their family is all right with me. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant, and thank you, Chief. I think it's absolutely ridiculous that you, you're going to have to come back to us to ask to buy more beanbags or more CS gas. It's to do your job. And, you know, I want to help you do your job in any way possible, understand that you have to do this. And, yeah, 100% support getting you. To me, this, this presentation could have been one page or one slide that said, this is what you need to do your job. And, and I'm all for that. So with that, I think I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Steiner?
Mayor, we do need to read the.
Oh, sorry, I'll make them, I'll read, that's right. I need to read the motion. Introduced by title and waive full reading of ordinance number 3347, first reading of the ordinance regarding the use and purchase of military equipment by a police department. I hate that term, the military equipment, but, okay. And that's it, correct? Look at that. Okay.
And for voice votes, Councilmember Casillas?
Aye.
Councilmember Richards?
Aye.
Councilmember Steiner?
Aye.
Vice Mayor DeDario?
Aye.
Mayor speak.
Aye.
And the item passes five to zero.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to legislative matters, code and ethics, and code of ethics and conduct for elected and appointed officials. It says, does any county, Councilmember want to report on this item? I think that's a yes. Okay.
I just need to revisit it. Quickly. Look at the man who wasn't even here. He's giving me a dirty look.
He's in trouble. Okay, we're going to go to, before we have any discussion, we're going to go to Donna Finch, Assistant to the City Manager, will present her report.
Thank you, Mayor speak. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm happy to be here tonight to bring back the Code of Ethics and Conduct for your further consideration and approval. As you know, this item was presented to the City Council at a study session meeting on April 27th. The council had a very lengthy discussion on the Code of Ethics and Conduct and provided some really helpful feedback that we've done our best to try and incorporate into the revisions today. So I'll go ahead and go through some of the changes that we made and open it up for any additional discussion at the end of the presentation. So first, here is an overview of what I'll be discussing today. As you know, I went into a lot of detail on these items in the study session meeting, so I'm just going to quickly review some of them, including what a code of conduct actually is, why it's important for a government agency to have one, and our current code of ethics in the CMC. And what I really want to focus on in the presentation is the code of conduct policies and the revisions that we've made since the presentation at the April 27th study session, and then, of course, provide a recommendation for you tonight. So again, just our ask of the City Council tonight is that they, the council reviews and approves the proposed, proposed Code of Ethics and Conduct for elected and appointed So just briefly, again, what a code of conduct is. It is rules and expectations for behavior within an organization. These codes of conduct exist both within public and private organizations. For public organizations and cities such as ourselves, these rules are put in place by the elected leadership. And they are best practices that are recommended for government agencies by the Institute for Local Government to promote a civil and effective governing body. So why is it important to have a code of conduct? First and foremost, a code of conduct can help enhance the public's trust within our local governing body. As many know, we live in really politically divisive times, and this has impacted the public's perception of government. So having a code of conduct in place really helps our officials to lead by example and promote a culture of civility and respect within the community as well as within the organization. These guidelines also help to develop an understanding of the type of behavior the public expects of our government and avoid any misunderstandings. And then lastly, a code of conduct policy that is adopted by our own governing body puts in place guidelines that allows officials to hold not only themselves, but others accountable for behaviors. So this next slide, in the study session meeting, I presented some headlines as to why it's important to have a code of conduct within an organization. I'll, I won't spend too much time on these again, but I just want to briefly go through them, just to kind of show what can happen if a code of conduct is not in place or if it's not followed by city officials. We see some headlines here of mayor facing recall over behavior. We see allegations of inappropriate conduct dividing city councils, employees leaving the city because of unacceptable behavior, infighting amongst councils, as well as censorship for behavior and turmoil within an organization, and then another example of censorship. So, of course, this is a preventative measure. We don't ever want to see these types of headlines for the city of Corona, and having this code of conduct in place can help prevent that from happening. So our current code of ethics, we do have one in place within our Corona municipal, municipal code, chapter 2.09. This current code of ethics just establishes guidelines for ethical standards of conduct for city officials. It was established in 2007 by a city council resolution, and it applies to elected and appointed city officials, including city council members, the elected city treasurer, as well as individuals appointed to city boards, commissions, and committees. This current code of ethics is fairly brief, and it accounts for goals and objectives for the city, and includes general principles and guidelines for conduct and professionalism such as respect of individuals, honor of the public's trust, and maintain open and honest communication. It was last revised in May of 2011, when the city council voted to repeal the resolution and put the code of ethics into an ordinance to codify it within the city municipal code, where it currently lies in chapter 2.09. So our recommended changes to the code of ethics, again, are based, it's based off of the research of best practices of code of conduct identified by the Institute of Local Government, as well as research of other local agencies. And the primary recommendation is to replace the current proper conduct and professionalism section within the code of ethics with an expanded administrative policy that identifies best practices for conduct in specific situations, including conduct with each other, conduct with city staff, conduct with the public, conduct with other public agencies, city councils' conduct with boards and commissions, and conduct with the media. We've also revised the penalty section within the current code of ethics, and we recommend replacing this with a revised section on responsibilities and enforcement that clarifies the process for addressing any violations of the code of ethics and conduct. So here we have the different sections within the revised code of conduct policy. Most of the policy that was presented on April 27th remain the same. The sections that were revised are highlighted and read here on the presentation, as well as in attachment three to the staff report. The first revision is in section 3.1, conduct among officials. And we revised the section that, or, excuse me, we added an additional subsection based off of the request of city council that officials are required to be prepared for public meetings and to read and understand agenda items and be prepared to vote on these items. And then the other sections that were presented on the 27th within this part of the policy remain the same. Moving on to the next section, 3.2, conduct with city staff, we added some clarifying language based off of feedback received to subsection three, do not disturb city staff from their jobs. And we clarified what constitutes a disruption. So currently, the revised language states that a disruption would be defined as any in-person visits or phone calls that disrupt staff from performing their day-to-day job functions. So things that are addressing kind of a quick question on an agenda item, or something that is not disruptive, that would take staff away from their job for long periods of times, would not be prohibited. It really just applies to lengthy unplanned visits and phone calls that really pull staff away from their job for long periods of time. The next section is subsection number four, where revisions were made based off of feedback received regarding public criticism of a staff member. And we specified that this applies to public criticism of individual staff members by name. So generally, you know, if there's any kind of dissatisfaction with the general performance of the city, that can be addressed. But what we really want to prevent is staff being publicly criticized by name, as that goes against the culture of civility and respect that we're trying to promote within this code of ethics and conduct. And then the last section on this policy, conduct with the public, there were no changes recommended on the 27th to that section, so that remained the same. Okay, moving on to section 3.4, conduct with other public agencies. So in subsection one, we added some language based off of feedback received to clarify that officials can represent their own personal opinions when interacting with other public agencies. They just need to be clear about who they're representing, especially if this personal opinion differs from the official city's position. So just some language is put in there to clarify that. I know we, we provided some comments on the 27th to kind of speak to that, but we wanted to make sure that that was clarified and covered within the revised code. And then subsection three, within the conduct with other public agencies, we added some language to clarify that this really applies for officials being professional and respectful when interacting with other officials, that they do this within, when they're acting in their official capacity, representing the city. And that they should show the same civility to officials from organizations as they would officials within their own organization. The next section, conduct with boards and commissions, there were no changes recommended during the April 27th meeting, so we did not make any recommended, recommended changes to that section. And then the last section within the policy, conduct with the press and media, based on feedback that was received, we revised the section to remove language stating that officials should refer the media to the city manager and refrain from making statements with the media, and clarified it. So it now says that officials should consult with the city manager on high-profile media inquiries to ensure accuracy and consistency with city messaging. So moving on to responsibilities and enforcement, this section largely remained the same. We did, we did add some clear, minor clarification to state that officials have responsibility to conduct, to conduct themselves in a manner that upholds the public trust. But other than that, everything had remained the same within this section. And I'll just quickly review kind of what the key areas are within this section. It states that each city official will be responsible for ensuring that they have their own understanding of the code of ethics and conduct, and that all of the guidelines are being followed. And that the mayor and the city council do have an additional responsibility to intervene when violations of that code are brought to their attention. And then the specific process for that would be if any initial violations were noticed by a city official, especially if those appear to be unintentional, that officials can bring those up amongst each other. But if offenses continue, then the matter should be referred to the mayor in a private setting to initiate action. If no action is taken by the mayor, or if the mayor is the person whose actions are being challenged, then the violation can be brought up by any council member at a public meeting. And officials who intentionally and repeatedly do not follow the guidelines outlined in the code are subject to penalties or sanctions that include, but are not limited to, public reprimand or censure, loss of regional board committee assignments, removal of board members or commissioners by the city council, or loss of appointment or removal from vice mayor or mayor position. And then lastly, just quickly touching again on how the ethics and conduct will be communicated to city officials, staff will ensure that officials receive training on all sections of the code of ethics and conduct during their initial orientations. And then we've also created a quick reference guide on kind of the key points of this code of conduct that were presented tonight, which will be provided to this, to the city officials upon approval of the policy. So with that, I'll go back to our recommendation, which again is that the city council review and approve the proposed, proposed code of ethics and conduct for elected and appointed officials. Specifically, this would require the council to introduce the first reading of ordinance number 3348, that is within the packet, to amend chapter 2.09 of the Corona municipal code, to modify the code of ethics and conduct for elected and appointed officials, as well as approve administrative policy 07400.009 to adopt a code of conduct for elected and appointed officials. So that includes my formal presentation to you tonight. I would be happy to open it up for any questions that the council may have of the proposed edits that were made, as well as any discussion on the revised policy language, or on any language that is being proposed that may not have made it into the discussion tonight due to timing issues.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Finch. So let's see, first, we're going to go to the public. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, yes, I have one speaker card for this item.
Welcome, Don Fuller, resident of town. Robert Mueller of the Mueller Report quoted Senator Allen Simpson of Wyoming as saying that if you don't have integrity, nothing else matters, and if you do have integrity, nothing else matters. I read the Mueller Report. I'm going to tell you a little anecdotal story. A few years ago, I got together with a person in town. He and I disagreed on just about everything. He was a, he's a pastor, I'm not going to recommend, mention his name, but you could, you all know him. And I said, why don't we get together for breakfast sometime? We can hash out some of our differences. So we met someplace in a local restaurant. And at one point, he asked me what it was that I had in opposition to an individual who was a former elected official in this town. And so I started going through the list. I had a pretty long list in my head that I was going through. And this person I was talking to kept coming back at me with one of three responses. Mr. DeDario's heard this story, by the way. And those three responses were in order, why, lots of people do that. The second one was, that's just politics. And the third one was, that's not illegal. Now, I felt like I was in the middle of a Salvador Dali painting, one of those things where the clocks are melted. Because here I was, making the case that we should have a reasonable expectation of a certain standard of ethics from our elected officials. And this person I was talking to was defending and making excuses for unethical behavior because the person who was the subject of our conversation was one of his buddies. So that's just a little story that happened to me. By the way, I paid for the breakfast. So, and I'm a good tipper. So I'm in favor of this policy, this stuff that Ms. Finch over there has been outlining and doing a good job. You do great presentations, by the way. And so give her a raise, somebody. And so I'm in favor of this, and what's needed is to make sure we all kind of keep our eyes open and do a little enforcement. And sometimes that means just watching, and if you see something, say something. That's all. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, I'll put up to my colleagues, Councilmember Casillas?
Ms. Finch, thank you.
Ms. Finch, thank you. You're doing God's work translating everything that happened here on the dais into some really comprehensive and well-put-together presentation and just code of conduct. So I appreciate the fact that, you know, you took the feedback, you put it back and, you know, presented us with something that I think we can all agree on. So I have no, you know, edits on the fly. I just want to reiterate to my colleagues and the public at large that, you know, we're not instituting this because there are problems. In fact, we are instituting this because there are no problems, and we want to be prepared and make sure that, you know, we are just establishing, you know, high standards for ourselves and are able to conduct the people's business in an ethical way. So I'm fully in favor of the code of conduct as written, and I thank you again for your work on this.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Richens.
All right, I've got to get real for a minute. My mother texted me during Ms. Finch's presentation and said, did they write this to keep you in line? And I wrote back, no, it's to keep Steiner in line.
Because his mother prefers you instead of him.
She is a Steiner fan. The last meeting that we went over this got pretty contentious and long, and it did. But that said, with this council code of ethics, they're good. These are good steps. These are how a council should behave. But I would like to take it a step further, glancing back at the last meeting, just to give people some feedback on how it played out. I got worked up, and the day after, I probably watched it two or three times more and agreed with me more.
At least you're consistent.
I'm consistent. But the beauty in it is, is I called Jacob on his day off and said, we need to talk, and I haven't been sleeping well. And he said, me too, I haven't been sleeping well either. And we got together and we worked it out. And we talked it out, and I made my points, and to his credit, he resolved my points. And we actually put a better system in place. I now have access to go where I want to go, I just have to drag him with me. But it turns out that now my conversations with Jacob are even more productive as we go places and as we check things out, and we have. We've thoroughly toured the library. And with that, the reason I wanted to spell this out since the last meeting is your most effective form of government on our city level is when your city attorney, your city manager, and your city council can work in conjunction, all three. That's when you get that all-star movement, and that's when you see great progress. And as contentious as that last meeting was, we'll see great progress going forward. So thank you, Ms. Finch. Mayor, I fully support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Steyer.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Ms. Finch, good job. I'm thankful I wasn't here for the presentation at the first meeting, but this is a no-brainer. It's very simple, be professional, be respectful of people in general, and be respectful of their time. So easy-peasy, I support the recommended changes, nice job.
Vice Mayor.
So truly, one of the hardest emails I had to write was my response to some of the highlighted questions. But after six or 17 revisions of toning down my language, I think that I got out a pretty nice email. And I do appreciate the fact that, though worded not the exact same way that I worded it, I feel as if the essence of the changes that I wanted in the wording were made. Very specifically, when speaking in public with other elected officials, boards, or whatnot, I was genuinely concerned about the fact that if I'm going as a citizen, I should be able to say whatever I want to say. And as we all know, I'm very colorful and animated when I speak sometimes. So it was important to me that that distinction get made in this, which it did. And if I'm speaking on behalf of the city or as an elected official of the city, there does need to be a level of decorum and professionalism. But if I'm not speaking on behalf of the city or as a city, I'm free to go. So I'm pretty happy about that. So thank you, Ms. Finch, for putting up my language and making it nice.
The technical term, putting it up?
Yep. And again, it was 16 or 17 different revisions before I actually hit the send button. I actually slept on it, too, which was a first for me. So I do appreciate that, and I had some conversations with our city manager as well. And I want to take some responsibility for at least one of these, or at least one of these. I'm a talkative person, and I'm a friendly person. And when I get going with some of these folks, it's coffee time. So I realize that, you know, that could be a time drain on some of our staff who have all been so accommodating to myself having, you know, impromptu stop-in discussions that could go for half an hour, an hour. So while I appreciate the fact that they were nice enough to have these conversations with me, I do realize that it was part of my problem as well. So I do want to take the responsibility for some of that, and I do support these changes. Thank you.
Great. Wow, so I'm going to be the only one that wants a change at the last minute? It's terrible.
Don't do it.
I can't help it. One of the, first of all, I want to say thank you to Ms. Finch for going over this and getting this back to us in a great presentation. This is an item that was important to me. I want to make sure that I brought it up, and as Councilmember Casillas pointed out, when there's not an issue. And really, this came from the idea that we passed decorum policy for folks that attend these meetings, and I thought it was just important, as important, or in fact, even more important, that we have ones for ourselves. So I'm happy to see this come forward, I'm very happy to polish this off. There were one comment I made during the meeting that talked about, you know, a turn of a phrase, and again, looking forward, or looking forward into, you know, whoever sits up here. In Section 2.09.04, it talks about that the city officials should use their best efforts to refrain from also creating even the appearance of impropriety. And not that I object to the phrase, I think it's a good phrase. However, what I'm concerned about is that there, you know, if there's animosity on this dais that another member of the council could use this as a weapon, that if something's even the appearance of, because that's a very subjective term. What's an appearance of impropriety to me may not be an appearance of impropriety to somebody else, that I could see it being weaponized and being used as a tool on this dais to either sow the seeds of discord in a way that, A, wouldn't be productive. So that's the only item, or the only word I'd like to see stricken, which is even the appearance of impropriety. And then, I just needed clarification questions on the, on the Section 3.4. It talks about conduct with other agencies. Be clear about representing the city or personal interests. Well, we all sit on a board, all of us sit on a board, our regional board. And as far as I'm concerned, none of us have checked with each other or the city on an official position about anything. Therefore, I'm worried that this section, I just want to be clarification, that this wouldn't require us to go back and have a council meeting every time before a meeting of RCTC or SCAG or CalCities or anybody else that we're representing ourselves. But it says, you know, when I go to CalCities, it says, or if I go to RCTC, it says Corona. Doesn't say West Speak, Mayor of Corona, it says Corona. So I want to make sure that we're being clear for that, clear on that item. So that's the only two, the only two things. So I don't know who wants to take those two.
Mayor, an appropriate way to amend this would be to make a motion to amend the language so that the council can make a decision on that.
Great. I know, sorry, I can't help it. So, go ahead.
I was just going to say, before you do that, we do, though, want to make sure we don't create an appearance of...
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that we, I think as an aspirational goal, it's a great thing. I mean, yeah, we should definitely not want to create the appearance of they're an issue. What I don't want is to say there's, you know, Mayor B and Councilmember A that have some issue with each other, and Councilmember A is going to bring up to, that he wants to censor someone, even if it doesn't get the votes. It creates, it creates an opportunity for drama. I don't want to weaponize something that I think is a great thing. And I could see at some point it being used as you violated, you know, sir, you have violated Section 2.9.004, or 040, and I would like to formally put you for a vote for censor because you have created an appearance of impropriety, even if there isn't one. And I just, like I said, I don't want to...
Do that now, right? Anybody could do that.
Well, you could say there's, you could say it's impropriety, but you could bring something forward.
But I think it shows in the report that it's the mayor that starts the censor.
Or if the mayor doesn't want to do it, then one of the other councilmembers can do it.
I asked Jacob his opinion on this, the appearance.
Like I said, aspirational versus when you put something in a code, you know, words mean things. That's all.
I'm not sure I can add a lot to this conversation, to be candid. Obviously, I don't think anyone disagrees that the avoiding appearance of impropriety is not a good thing to be avoiding. Whether or not you choose to put it in here is up to you. I really think it's a decision for council to make. I didn't want to, to be your sixth vote on this one.
Hunted.
And then with your concern over each of us sitting on boards, clearly, we are representing our individual cities and making decisions based on what each of us want as individuals. I mean, that's, we've been doing that all along, right?
That's what I would think, that was my clarification. My clarification would be, because if you read it, it says the official city position. And as far as I know, I've never been given an official city position on the 15, or on, you know, whether or not there should be a light rail to Coachella Valley.
I asked Dean maybe to chime in on that one. Do you have any thoughts on that, just with us sitting on individual boards and clearly making decisions on behalf of the city?
Yeah, I want to also go back to the other one because I have suggestions maybe to make you a little bit more comfortable, Mayor, with the existing language. I think the presumption in terms of what you do at these other regional bodies is you're representing the city and the city's position on things, which I think a lot of times are sort of self-explanatory. I think the language is intended to deal with those situations where an official position has actually been taken by the city, and, you know, so if the city has decided, and if, as the representative of that body, I think if there's a potential dispute about what the city's position should be, you know, bringing it back here for a conversation with the council to get the city's official position, I think is probably is a good thing to do. And I think the intention is that if that kind of position has been established, that you won't then go there and vote in a manner that's not in agreement with that position.
So would you suggest amending a sentence here to say when there is an official city
To me, it's implied in that. I don't know, I don't know if you need to go that far. I think that's the kind of thing that is, it's going to be an interpretation thing for the council. I mean, this is your policy. So perhaps I would, I would let this language live a little bit and see if that becomes an issue that needs to be clarified if you find yourself in a position of discomfort over that.
I mean, that's one of the reasons we're all on these boards, is that we've all placed trust in each other to do those things. So, you know, if Councilmember Casillas is a WRCOG and expresses an opinion that, you know, maybe I don't agree with, or, you know, one of them, do we call her back here and say that you, you know, we need to have an official city position on what you just said? I mean, it's kind of...
Yeah, you don't want this to become that cumbersome. It seems to me that that's one of the reasons why you come back here and talk about what you're doing at those other regional boards, so that you can potentially identify areas where you might have different opinions.
But it's kind of after the fact.
It is, but I, again, I don't think this is intended to be that definitive, or it's supposed to be a living, breathing document that you can live with and get comfortable with, and not, or I don't think we're trying to define every possible scenario.
I understand that. I'm just saying, and again, I'm playing a little bit of devil's advocate, that, you know, the, as my grandmother would say, the road to, you know, where is paved with good intentions. So what I just want to do is make sure, and then granted, yeah, this came up, that, you know, some future, I don't think anybody in this dais I totally trust, and when they, the areas that they are, they are representing the city.
Yep.
But is there an official position on keynote checker spot butterfly, or on RTA bus routes going to Riverside, or, you know what I mean? I don't want that, this to become a, an issue later on when there is a disagreement.
And I can just tell you again, sort of Jacob, I can tell you what my reading of this is, and it's implied that these are situations where you're knowingly taking a position that's contrary to where the city wants to go.
Okay.
Not a situation where you're, you know, it's not a big enough of an issue that you've had a formal conversation here.
Okay, all right, now I'll drop that one. I just want to go back to that.
Yeah, can I go back to that and explain to you why? So when this issue came up, Ms. Finch and I worked on this together. It's one of the, so the language that you're concerned about says, city officials should use their best efforts to refrain from also creating, also creating even an appearance of impropriety in their actions and decisions. Now, you have to read that in conjunction with the first phrase, which says, and we did this deliberately, in addition to not violating applicable laws. So that's the rule. The rule is, don't violate the law, because the law only prohibits actual conflicts. So in addition to that, then there's this aspiration tone of, use your best efforts to even, to avoid even the appearance of impropriety. So the law is the minimum standard, the next one up is sort of that aspirational thing that everybody's trying to get to. So I...
Here's the question for you. Are laws aspirational? And do laws leave fuzziness?
Laws are not aspirational, but this is not about the law. It says, in addition to not violating the law, then go above it. This is, this is a policy for you all to interpret. It's not a law for me to enforce without your own interpretation. So you're going to be the ones interpreting this, and so you're going to have control over how harsh to treat that best efforts to avoid language.
I do see a potential conflict, that's all.
Mayor, may I introduce by title only and waive full reading of Ordinance Number 3348, first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 2.09 of the Corona Municipal Code and modify the code of ethics and conduct for elected and appointed officials?
I would like to institute a substitute motion that would be just like that, however, to strike the words...
Can we take a motion on my motion first?
We need a second on your mo, we need a second on the first motion first.
Do I got a second on the first motion?
I'll second the first motion.
Okay. I'm creating a substitute motion.
Now, you would, you can create a substitute motion, and we would act on that substitute motion first if it gets a second.
Right. It's okay, I, you know...
I'll second Wes's substitute motion. I'll be the rebel with him.
Okay. Now you'll act on that first motion first. So the first motion on the floor is to, you've already read the action with the substitute, that really, you're taking out that entire second phrase.
Is to strike the words, is to strike the words...
Well, it's really, anything past that comma is not, no longer necessary. Like, if you're striking those words, then you're taking that entire half phrase out of there.
Don't violate the law like that, that's good.
Yeah, so it would, it would read just this. It's not going to read, in addition to not violating. It's going to say, city officials shall not violate applicable federal law, state, and local laws in order to assure independence impartially. Oh, wait, none of that is going to be, you're just, it's just going to say, A, will read conflicts of interest, officials shall not violate applicable federal, state, and local laws, period.
Great.
That's all, by taking your phrase out, that's all you... That's all, by taking your phrase out, that's all you'd be left with, basically.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Okay, so the boys vote for the first motion. Councilmember Casillas?
No.
Councilmember Richens?
Which one are we voting on?
The second, you're voting on Wes's.
Takes away, you can, you can...
I want to vote yes on all of them, so yes.
Well, if you vote yes on, okay.
Councilmember Steiner?
No.
Vice Mayor DeDario?
No.
Mayor speak?
Yes.
Okay.
And that item fails to pass.
Okay.
Now you take action on the first item, which is to take action on the ordinance as presented.
Okay.
Mayor Casillas?
Councilmember Casillas?
Aye.
Councilmember Richens?
Aye.
Councilmember Steiner?
Aye.
Vice Mayor DeDario?
Aye.
Mayor speak?
Aye.
And that item passes 5 to 0.
That was the most confusing motion ever.
Okay. You haven't had a substitute motion yet?
No, we haven't had one in a while. Thank you for doing that.
Okay, so we're on to Boards and Commissions reports, started from City Council Commissions and Staff. Planning Commission, we have none. Parks and, Parks and Recreation Commission report. This is a receive and file Parks Recreation Commission updates from May 10. Ms. Edwards, did we have a comment on that?
Mayor, yes, we received one written comment from resident, Mr. Mayfar, and his written comments will be filed with the meeting minutes.
Great, thank you. And since we're not acting on this item, all we're doing is receiving and filing.
That is correct.
Great, okay. All right, let's see. Regional meetings, update from Councilmember Casillas, League of Cities Community Services Policy Committee meeting from April 28.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so I serve as the vice chair for this committee for the League of Cities, and we had a meeting on April 28. And during this meeting, we went over the work program. So just to remind everyone that the Community Services Policy Committee pays attention to the following items. And this is what it is, that we work around and try to find legislation that cities can support or oppose. And it just gets funneled in to the League of Cities and out to the cities. So that's the work of the committees. The committees pay close attention to these issues, make recommendations, submit that to the body, and that gets passed on to the cities. So we focus on homelessness and wraparound services, parks and access to open space, children, childcare, youth programs and literacy, seniors and aging issues, and disaster preparedness. So on the meeting of the 28th, we had two presentations. One's from the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness, and then the other from the California Interagency Council on Homelessness. All cities across the state of California are really focusing and trying to address the issue of homelessness. And this is a great space. It was a four-hour meeting from 9 to 12, where we not only had presentations, but shared amongst each other what it is that our cities are doing to address this large issue. Also presented was the Care Court and Behavioral Health Legislative Package. So Care Court is essentially going to provide mandatory services for folks who, you know, are met with the public safety and, you know, are struggling with addiction or what have you. And rather than incarceration, they will be mandated to receive assistance. And so there is hope that maybe this can help folks address the underlying issues to some of these illicit activities. So we had a presentation on that. And then we talked about legislation, SB 1338 by Umberg, and AB 2830 by Bloom, which is Community Assistance Recovery, was the care, the care program. And then just a slew of legislation from Eggman, SB 929, Community Mental Health Services Data Collection. So there's just a lot of state stuff that's happening that the, you know, the one place that I think the league does a really good job of is they break down legislation for city leaders and highlight potential bills that are making their way through Sacramento that can either help or hurt our efforts on the ground. And lastly, we had a proposed behavioral health policy statement. So this is essentially an aspirational, it's like a proclamation from within the league for members. So the behavioral health proclamation statement, "CalCities supports additional funding and resources to expand access to behavioral health services, including efforts to assist California's homeless population, especially those individuals experiencing mental health and substance use disorders. This includes, but is not limited to, supporting counties and expanding community-based care settings to provide for prevention, intervention, treatment, infrastructure, and recovery systems." So again, that was the meeting of the 28th. And why this is important is it becomes a, it helps cities provide a framework for addressing these issues. And it gives us not just examples from other cities, but sometimes even tools and resources, like we got from the state and the federal government, to try to address homelessness in our cities individually. I can tell you that Corona is at the forefront, and so there wasn't anything that was covered that was new, that I felt like we weren't already addressing or doing better than our neighboring cities. So that's it for this one, Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you. And you have the next one, which is an update on the Western Regional, I'm sorry, Western Riverside Council Governments Meeting of May 2.
Yep, I've got two more. Well, this one and another one. So WR cog meeting of May 2. We basically just discussed the upcoming General Assembly meeting, and that's going to happen on June 23. And I just want to highlight that one of our own will be receiving the Community Service Award. And that's Ms. Karen Alexander, who is going to be honored at this huge event for all of her work in the community. So shout out, early shout out to Ms. Karen Alexander. Also, at this meeting, we went over our fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget and some, some developments from there. Overall, WR cog is anticipating $75 million in revenues against $45 million in expenditures. The difference is revenues and expenditures is primarily due to the difference in TUMF revenue collected compared to anticipated TUMF project reimbursement expenses anticipated to be paid out in the following year. So this is just like a, it's passed through, through WR cog. Currently, TUMF is collected more than it is paid out in projects, just because projects take time. And there are four major policy points that are currently in discussion. The establishment of a hero reserve, prepayment of CalPERS unfunded liability, because just like every other municipality, WR cog is also struggling with that. The continuation of the fellowship program at different contribution percentages. This is something that I'm really in favor of. We know for sure that mentorship and fellowship programs work and that they also really, really help folks who maybe don't have any other avenue or professional networks themselves. So I really don't want to discontinue that program. And lastly, alternatives to the grant writing program, which is a service that WR cog provides for cities. We don't personally use it, but for smaller cities, it is, it can be helpful. But I think we need to think that program through a little better. So that's it for the May 2 meeting of WR cog, Mayor.
Okay, the next one is you as well, which is the Executive Committee meeting of May 9. And you, normally, it's me doing the multiples.
I know, it's true. So that last meeting is just because I didn't get it in in time for the last agenda. But anyway, this CalCities meeting of May 9, I was, these are the larger regional meetings. This is a Riverside County Division, and we met in Indian Wells. And this was on May 9. And these meetings tend to be light, to be honest. These meetings are really, their value is in networking and in discussing, in my opinion, in finding out what other cities are doing and how they're approaching things. But, you know, I did learn a little something. There was a presentation from the Sunline Bus Line Company, and they're doing some really innovative things with hydrogen technology and hydrogen fuel cell buses, which I think is really awesome, because hydrogen fuel cell technology is actually even better than, you know, CNG and other, and electrical. So I really hope that that becomes a little more feasible. They're doing a, buses out in the Coachella Valley, and they're also doing like smaller van-type transportation that will be in, on routes and available on, like, every 15-minute cycles. And they're all using, using that kind of fuel cell. But again, as the sole representative of Corona at this meeting, I had to sit there while our neighbor, the city of Norco, had like three members in attendance.
Well, you didn't call me. I was gonna go.
It just made me a little jealous, but, but there wasn't anything massively discussed. What, what I want to emphasize here is that participating in these meetings and building these relationships with our neighboring cities and our colleagues in other municipalities, where it, where it really benefits us is that we can not just sample what's working and seeing what's not working, but that we can call on one another and, and really lean on one another when we need regional support for initiatives. And so, you know, I know it sounds a little soft, but networking and this like friend-building with opportunities like this is really important. So that's the reason why I'm participating in, in these meetings, is trying to find what's working well for our neighbors and make those contacts to improve the potential policymaking in the future. So that's it.
Great.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, there's never a reason to be jealous of Norco, for the record.
Listen, I, I want to make sure that when I, I do talk to our, our friends to the north, we just, you know, I refer to them as North Corona, and they refer to us as South Norco, so it's all good. Okay, let's see, I'm gonna prior to report for the Western Programs meeting of May 11. Actually, it wasn't Western Programs, it was a regular meeting of May 11. We, kind of the highlight was the, there was discussion and final vote on the Eastbound 91 project evaluation. And that's, it was a 20 to 0 vote, which was great to hear. And I made sure that, even though it wasn't in the staff report, that included evaluation of Foothill and River and how the widening of the eastbound side would, how it would impact our city. And, and they told me that they would be working with, with our staff as well. We talked really, I think the most substantial part of the meeting was a pretty long discussion about two bills. Actually, ended up being three bills. The first one is AB 2237, and that's with, by Assembly Member Friedman. And this would oppose, prohibit, I'm sorry, would prohibit funding that would, doesn't meet climate goals and, which doesn't sound horrible. You would think, boy, yeah, you certainly want to do things that don't harm the, harm the environment. However, this would basically stop all projects that introduce additional greenhouse gas, meaning no new lanes, no new anything, not just on the highways, but on any, any state routes or any other roads that would be deemed, any other thing. So she followed that up with another bill that would actually strip away Measure A money and ensure that all local transportation commissions would have to justify, and on a month or a yearly basis, that all funds contributed to a project, a transportation project, would have a, no effect on greenhouse gas as well, which would impact all kinds of things. So, including things that the voters, we voted, the citizens of, of the state, or I'm sorry, of the county approved Measure A twice with a list of projects. Now, those projects would be outlawed and not be allowed to go forward. So we, the RCTC is putting, put together a letter. I furnished that letter to, to the city manager and a few other folks to see that fits our, our oppose rule. And one of the, that, I'll sign those this evening, and hopefully those will, will be in the mail tomorrow. And then lastly, since we don't always oppose everything, we, we are supporting SB 1410, which is by Senator Caballero and co-sponsored by Senator Roth. And that limits mitigation for VMT to areas within one mile of a transit stop. And it really pushes, and what we asked that, connecting with Senator Roth and with Senator Caballero, that we look at really finding a way to wedge in mitigation banking for SB 743. Let's see, last, and really relating the fact that, as Senator Roth has said many times to us, that, that we need to have consistent and reliable and frequent public transportation that we do not have in, in Corona or Western Riverside County. So hopefully, when we have those things, then we can, you know, with getting mitigated, mitigation within a mile of a transit stop, it'll actually help us do that. Let's see, and last, I was asked to represent the Western, couple of the Western cities and on the executive committee, and I'll be serving on that starting next month. And, let's see, on June 2, there'll be a groundbreaking for the SR 60 Truck Climbing Lane Project at 10:00 a.m. in Beaumont. I will not be there, but if anybody would like to go, it should be a good time. And that's it for me. Okay, so we're gonna go on to, I'm sorry, Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards in the public for any of these updates?
Mayor, no, we do not have any speaker cards.
So surprising. Okay, Mr. Durlath, do you have any comments tonight? Okay, Mr. Ellis, do you have any comments?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Great. Okay, on to Councilmember comments. Councilmember Casillas, do you have any comments tonight?
No comments for me, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Richens?
Thank you, Mayor. I just think it's great we can attend a meeting where we've said the Pledge of Allegiance twice and also done a substitute motion, so. I haven't, I haven't done it. Have you done it? Oh, well, it's a rookie.
Couple times.
Okay, well, so long for that. I, a week or so ago, I got to load up the minivan with Tom Moody, and the two of us trucked off to about four or five different locations. And it was really cool to go to these places and see the city in action. And one of the places we went to, I don't know if you guys have been here, they'll give you a tour, is the sewer. They, they, they put these things in big pools, and it cycles. And Moody can give you the whole lecture on it if you want it. But they actually have life-saving rings in case someone falls in. And that's a good thing, because I'm not jumping in after that dude. So the point is, is that it was a, it was a really good tour, saw a lot of buildings. But more importantly, and I want to say this publicly, and I'm sure the other four agree, is Tom's heart is in the job. I mean, you, you, you ride with him, and he talks about it, and you see the passion in his eyes, and he explains the systems to you. And I think he's been here 25 years, roundabouts, right? And you just see that, that he's made a career of this, and it's really cool to witness. And as cool as it was to go to these places, it was just more cool to be in the van and, and take in the experience. And so I appreciate the, the visit. Next is a few of us, most of us were able to attend the Joe Dominguez 75-year post celebration. So they've turned 75.
Can I play the video? Yeah, of, of Tom with the, with the music behind him.
They, they had like 25 people with trumpets and...
It was the Mariachi Academy.
Right?
That was great.
And our table was like less than 12 inches away from them. So like you eat dinner, and there's a trumpet right here, and Wes recorded that. So if, I'm sure you can post that, and everyone can enjoy that humor. The most touching in the last week was the Chamber of Commerce, the Executive Leadership Roundtable team did a pathway for fentanyl, for people, for Cronans that have died of fentanyl. And it's everything that you would think it would be, and it was executed very beautifully. But the heart-touching moment is five mothers whose sons have died, or kids have died from fentanyl in the last year. They were there, and they all came up, and one of them spoke. And as an elected official, they make you sit behind these people, right? And what, what the crowd didn't see was these mothers, as one was speaking, all the mothers' arms embraced. And it was truly touching, and it, it said two things. One, fentanyl sucks. And it said two things. One, fentanyl sucks. And two, never underestimate the love of a mother. So hopefully, more advances can be done on fentanyl. The Memorial Mile March is coming up. If you haven't walked it, I highly recommend it. You can see some beautiful houses on Grand Boulevard as you walk. And speaking of beautiful houses on Grand Boulevard, my wife has been out of town the last few days and returned home while this meeting started. And I have no doubt she's on the phone now with her friends, talking about how well the house was kept and everything's clean, and the kids are doing good, so.
Because she's not a vacuum cleaner?
No. And so I have no doubt that I'll come home to a hero's welcome for that. And if you don't see me at the next meeting, send help. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Steiner?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to give a quick shout out to our Public Works Director, Savat Kimpfo. I had yet another resident reach out to me today to thank me for your personal onsite visit at his residence to check out his concerns that he was having with cars speeding on the street and all around the school. He was just really pumped up that you would do that in person, and you walked the whole area with them. So keep up the good work. That really makes a difference when you can just do that extra effort. So thank you. And then I did want to tell you, Savat, you look really sharp tonight. I don't know who picks out your suits, but dude, you got it, man. Nice work.
Okay, Vice Mayor, you gonna take any fashion tips over there?
They don't make those suits big and tall, so. Just a couple of comments. Last Saturday at Stagecoach Park in District 2, we had a cleanup and tree planting event. The weather did not cooperate. It was about 187 degrees. And, but we did manage to get 50 trees, 50-plus trees into the ground. I was in Group 3 and was sent up the hill, which I was thoroughly pleased with, walking uphill, to plant trees. There was a couple of community groups there. There was a Boy Scout group and a bunch of volunteers. It went really well. Corona Fire Department was there. Thank you, Corona Fire Department. They were a little extra by putting out their, putting on their wildland gear to go plant trees. But they, the four of them from Truck 2 really got a lot of trees in the ground and really helped us out. Thank you to the tree warden. He was there. And to our videographer, Ashil, he was lugging a camera around in 187-degree weather. And Dr. Turner had to use her mom voice and say, you need to go sit down in some shade and get some water, because he was just drenched. But a lot of good, a lot of good was done that day. Really loved the fact that there was a lot of volunteers, and District 2 showed up. It was a great day. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just had a few things. One, on May 5th and 6th, I went to a regional conference for SCAG and was able to cast a vote for the City of Corona for some changes to SCAG bylaws, which really, they weren't anything special. But the second day, got to listen to some folks truly not understand housing and transportation, including the relation between the two. Listening to the director of Calstra and a developer talk to each other about transportation and housing and how they really just weren't talking the same language was fascinating to me. One, an infill developer said that the biggest impact to transportation is folks having to drive to the supermarket, and that cities really need to approve more supermarkets. And so I turned and asked the multitude officials that were around me and said, raise your hand if you voted down supermarkets. And no hands came up, really surprising to me. And then listening to the director of Calstra talk about the fact that what really cities need to do is really plan out where housing is gonna go so that you could plan transportation around that. And in unison, the same number of elected officials said, you mean like a general plan? And so it really highlighted that we have some understanding issues and siloed issues at this level. And I was able to talk to a couple of people afterward, and I don't know, we'll see what happens. But on the 5th, that morning actually, I was at the National Day of Prayer that happened at Eagle Glen. Had a great time. Want to thank the folks for the invitation. The city manager and I attended and got to listen to a pretty interesting talk by a gentleman from Kentucky. The, as Councilmember, sorry, as Councilmember Richen said, the fentanyl awareness walk was truly inspiring. I got involved in it because I had a resident of District 1 that reached out to me a few months back about his daughter that I happened to coach his son in football, probably 10 or 15 years. And he was very surprised I was on the council. And learning that his daughter, that was a nurse and had run out of a Xanax prescription, asked a friend. She was, she had been using Xanax for years as anxiety medication, as prescribed by a doctor, and happened to run out, asked a friend if they had one that she could borrow, because she was getting her refill on Tuesday. Took a fentanyl-laced pill, one fentanyl-laced pill, and did not wake up. And we heard that from more than a few people at this event, and it's truly a scourge. I mean, right now, the number of people that have been, young people that have been killed by fentanyl are now claiming as many, in that, the age frame, in that young age frame that they're, it's really becoming a threat to claim more lives in car accidents in this county. Let that sink in, that kids are dying at a higher rate from a fake pill than they are of car accidents. And that's an epidemic. So I really hope that you speak, you know, if you, I'm telling as many people as possible, tell your kids that even if it looks like a pill, you've got it from your friend that you know, and she got it from a friend that she had known for years. And this guy had gotten it from a guy that didn't know what it was. So I don't want any, you know, seeing that family in tears and talking about their daughter was heart-wrenching. But it was really nice to see this, this walk, awareness walk that was really, and I want to thank, I know Dr. Turner's not here, but her and her staff really did a fantastic job of getting that done and getting that in. It's very inspirational. Hopefully, people will take that walk. It's just west of the skate park. Let's see, on the 12th, I went to spring band concert at the, at Santiago. These kids impressed me every single time. This was wins, basically all the wins that were there. And these kids are just amazing. I mean, they played movie themes where if you closed your eyes, you'd think you're watching the movie. Truly an amazing group there. And then on the 13th, yes, we went to the 75th anniversary of the founding of the Joe Dominguez Post. Councilmember Richens gave a little bit of a, a little bit of a history lesson on the post, and it was really great. And looking forward to coming back and celebrating 100 years. And then on the 14th, visited the Corona Relay for Life at Santana Park at NAM. It's one of my favorite events, not just because you see all these people out there that are survivors of cancer, that are walking and doing this stuff, but I can sit in my backyard pool and listen to music all day, played by the band that play there. So that's it for old stuff. Upcoming events, we have a Economic Development, Growing Your Business webinar tomorrow at 5 o'clock. If you go on the city's website, it'll show you how you can sign up for that. This one is on growing your sales. It's been good. I think this is the fourth one, I think. I'm guessing it's the fourth one. All right. It's, they've been, they've been good so far. I missed the first, the first one, but the rest have been really great. And then as Councilmember Richen said, the Memorial Mile March. It is starting at the Corona Chamber of Commerce. Registration starts at 8:00. The walk will start at 9:00. It's supposed to be a nice day. It should be, should be a nice walk. It's a, it's a great time to kind of just walk over there, and then you walk over to the city, to the Historic Civic Center and walk back. It's really cool, and it's free. So come on out and enjoy a walk with your, with your residents there and your friends and people you don't know, and that's it. Okay, so with that, we are adjourned until the next meeting of May 25th. It's a study session. Thank you.